And I'll call the order of the business at January 27, 2015. Mr. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Nedapigian.
President.
Kenneth Barron.
Here.
Thomas Berry.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Margaret Horvath.
Here.
Joseph Kaczynski.
President.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Councilman Bob Coniston to please lead us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Bob. Item number three, the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
Motion to approve the January 27 meeting of the Dirkwood Night City Council.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item number four, approval of the minutes for eight, the minutes of regular meeting of January 13, 2015.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
Move that the minutes of the regular council meeting held on January 13, 2015 be approved as submitted.
Support.
Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item number six, fund transfers and current claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Apigian.
I move to approve the fund transfers and current claims as attached, numbers 6-1 through 6-31.
Support.
Second by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item number seven, considerations of bids, 7A, advertised for bids for the Beach Daily Water Main Program Public Service Administrator, Zimmer.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Apigian.
I move to approve a public service administrator, Bill Zimmer's request for the Beach Daily Water Main Design Engineering authorizations with Wade Trim's letter dated January 12, 2015, to proceed with the preparations, plans, specifications, necessary permits for construction, advertise for bids for the Beach Daily Water Main Program. Cost of the design engineering services not to exceed $85,000.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, you're right. And budgeted in the 2014-15 water and sewer budget year as detailed in item 7.
Second. Support.
Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Sorry, Dan, we just lost a little money, but that's all right for you. Any discussion?
That's what I get from writing over it.
Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item number eight, reports from the mayor, 8A, from Mayor Pletko, appointments to the Board of Review. And actually, the first one is a concurrence, and the second paragraph is just to receive note and file. I don't know if we want two motions, or just put that all into one.
I put it together.
Okay?
I'll be happy to do it.
Councilman Apigian.
I'm oof to note, I move to note and file Mayor Pletko's appointments as illustrated in item 8A. They are Dennis Sabatko.
Now, that's the concurrence. We have to concur. That's what I just said.
Yes.
We have to concur with his. Move to concur. Just move to concur that, and then receive note and file the other.
I'm gonna say they are to concur with our mayor. Dennis Sabatko to the Board of Review for a three-year term, to expire January 2018. And Ron Krokmaulni for a two-year term expiring July 20, 2016. Reappointing Dick Rick Coogan and Dave Abdullah for a two-year appointment expiring January 20, 2017, as illustrated in 8A.
And be received note and file for them.
Note and file for both of them.
For the second paragraph.
Second paragraph two.
Concurrence on the first.
Should we start all over again, please?
Concur in the first. Note and file.
The first paragraph, receive note and file second. Repeat, please.
Is outlined in 8A.
Support.
Screw that one.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Number nine, reports from city official, 9A, from Treasurer Raleigh Investment and Fund Report for December 31, 2014.
Mr. Chair.
Received note and file. Councilman Berry.
Move City Council receive note and file the investment of funds is outlined in 9A.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. 9B, from Planning Commission Chairman Coogan, the 2014 Annual Report for Planning Commission Activities. We can accept this?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
I move that 9B be referred to a study session with the expectation that the Planning Commission be there so that we can address some of the concerns we've had in recent time.
Support. Second by Councilman Berry. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Councilman Kaczynski.
Councilwoman Horvath is first.
Do I have to go out there and sit to be called on?
She, uh, she.
No, but the maker of the motion has first for discussion.
Ladies first, ladies first in America.
But, go ahead, Councilwoman Horvath.
I would suggest that we accept this report, and then have a study session with the Planning Commission, as I think we've talked about in the past anyway, and work it that way.
You have a motion on the table, so you might as well take.
Mr. Chairman. Councilman Kaczynski.
The intention was to use this document as a guide to address some of the issues that we've been concerned about, and subsequently, we can receive note and file, or accept it, whatever the case may be at some future point. But I do want to bring the Planning Commission in to ask some questions there. For example, there, uh, the, on the, on the sec, on to fourth and fifth issues, I'd like to ask some questions about those two, and it'd be a good starting point to go forward with the rest.
There was other things we talked about that I had notes for, fences, setbacks, those type of things, which would, could be all discussed at the same time. So I'd be more than happy to set up a.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Apigian.
We simply, he's pointing out here, this is an obligation the Planning Commission has to do. We should just say, note and file, and present it to, as required, his 2014 Annual Report, which they're stipulated to present to us. And then, we refer this to a study session. We don't have to discuss any parts of their report now.
No, I didn't intend to. That was not the intention.
Let's accept their report as defined in 9B, and then refer this to a study session.
Well, that was a motion at this point.
That's with the motion.
It was to refer it to a study session.
Actually, it was a little confusing. He started talking about what we're gonna.
No, I understood it.
Yeah.
So we have a motion on the table, Mr. Chair.
That's correct. To, to, uh, put 9B to a study session, have a meeting with the Planning Commission.
Unless the motion is amended.
To receive note and file, then we don't have to bring it back, but maybe we'll want to discuss something.
Oh, we can accept it later. Gary, did you have a comment?
Mr. Chair, just remember again, there's a difference between accepting a motion and receiving, noting, and filing a motion. If you accept, then you're approving the content. If you receive note and filing, then you are simply noting it for the record as official acknowledgement.
These are actual factual things that happened last year.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
There's a second part to it where you.
The intent is to be accepted, discuss these plans.
But, we have the motion on the floor to refer this to a study session and have a meeting with the Planning Commission. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. We will do that. Okay. 9C, from Recreation Director Gribble, mayoral appointments to the Recreation Commission.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move we concur with Mayor Pletko and appoint Mr. John Trappala to the Recreation Commission, and thank Bill Eby for his 27 years of service, as outlined in 9C.
This is really just receive note and file, because we don't have.
And receive note and file.
Concurrence for this. It's just a mayoral appointment.
Receive note and file the mayor's appointment of John Trappala, and thank Bill Eby for his 27 years of great service to the Recreation Commission.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item number D, from Recreation Director Gribble, would custom modify the Richard A. Young Center Expansion Project.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
Um, I would like to put this back to a study session with the Recreation Director. Um, I'm concerned with, or I have some questions, I should say, um, on this project.
Yeah, there was some stuff that came up, so, and I did talk to Ken.
I second.
Second by Councilman Apigian. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. 9E, from Public Service Administrator Zimmer, Annual Safety Award Program.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Berry.
Move City Council concur with Mr. Zimmer, uh, with an award, the Annual Safety Award Program, as outlined in 9E.
Second.
Second by Councilman Apigian. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item number F, from Public Service Administrator Zimmer, the 2014 Water Main Improvement Program Change Order Number Two, and Payment Certificate Number Five.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Apigian.
I move to concur with Public Service Administrator Zimmer's to increase the 2014 Water Main Improvement Program with Change Order Number Two and Pay Certificate Number Five, prepared by Wade and Trim for the 2014 Water Main Improvement Program. There is money in the contingency amount for 2014 water budget to cover this amount. Therefore, this is request approval of Change Order Number Two, in the amount of $12,569.06 for Payment Certificate Number Five, in the amount of $228,964.0685, detailed in 9F.
Support.
Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. 9G, from Public Service Administrator Zimmer, Military Hills Subdivision Paving Program, Change Order Number One, and Payment Certificate Number Two.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Apigian.
I move to concur with Public Service Administrator Zimmer's increase to the Military Hills Subdivision Paving Program, Change Order Number One, Pay Certificate Number Two, as prepared by Wade and Trim. There is money in our contingency account in the 2015 local road budget to cover this amount. Therefore, the request approval of Change Order Number One, in the amount of $42,004, and for the Payment Certificate Number Two, in the amount of $50,695.30. Payment Certificate Number Two includes the contract increase reflected in Change Order Number One, as illustrated in 9G.
Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item number 11, Ordinance's Resolution, 11A, First Reading Proposal Ordinance H-1501 Regarding Michigan Building Code, 2012.
Can we put all three of these together and say approving the?
Uh, if that's a choice.
Fine with it.
Okay, go ahead. A, B, and C.
Yes.
B would be the proposal ordinance regarding plumbing.
Building code, the plumbing code, the mechanical code, both for 2012.
I'm sorry, the mayor was just noting, and I think he's correct, normally for ordinances, there would be separate motions.
Several motions.
You could approve it, but in the minutes, it should be shown separately of a first reading in three successive motions.
We'll consider it read for the first time.
These are state adopted codes. You're not gonna have a second or a third reading.
Just consider it read for the first time.
Consider it. The mall read, and then just say, and the records will show it as three individual motions.
So.
So moved?
I'm so moved.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item number 11D, from Mayor Pletko, Resolution to amend the Alliance of Down River Watershed Bylaws. Gary, have you looked this over?
Uh, no, I haven't, but maybe Pat McCully has. Is Patrick?
No, not that I'm aware of. Has he looked at this? Okay, then I apologize.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
Move Council concur the request of Mayor Pletko regarding the attached resolution to amend the Alliance of the Down River Watershed Council bylaws. And, is, the established date is 1/12/15, all recorded per item 11D. Support.
Second by Councilman Berry. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. 13, New Business, 13A, Business License Renewal for the Boneyard, 7010 Telegraph.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I move that the Council accept the renewal application for the Boneyard as outlined in 13A.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Is there any discussion?
My favorite restaurant.
Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. At this point, that ends our regular portion of our council meeting. Is there anything to come from any of the council members?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Yeah, I just had two things. Do we have somebody from the Assessment Department here? Yes, great. Question, just because we've, I know I've received some calls from residents of Dearborn Heights regarding a letter that they've received from the Department of Treasury. No, there's no one here?
No, but I think I can answer.
Okay, I just wanted someone to share, because I have the answer, but if somebody could explain it to the residents, because they're calling and asking, what does this mean exactly? Because Wayne County was selected to have this.
Well, the whole state is going through this review, and now they've reached a point where Wayne County, and so they will do an audit of the Assessment Department of all the municipalities and communities in Wayne County. And that's my understanding of what's in the contents of the letter. Doesn't necessarily mean that that individual homestead and house will be audited, but rather, there's a, there's a long checklist, and they go through and do a process.
Right. And just to let residents know, it's contracted through TMA, which is Tax Management Associates, so they know who to expect that comes out on site, if they are chosen for that assessment, reassessment. So I wanted to share that, just because I've had some phone calls from residents who were concerned about that letter, and didn't quite understand what was going on, so I wanted to share that. The, what I was told, they will measure around the home and the garage, and assess, like, your external property value, is what I've been advised, besides the measurements I just shared. Yeah. So you may receive a letter, and if you do, that's what it's all about. So I just wanted to thank you, because we had some calls on that. And then, the last question I had was regarding a flooding meeting update. Mr. Mayor, do we have an update on a date? I know we've been having discussion, and wanting to get the information to our residents. That would be included with Wayne County CEO Warren Evans and other elected officials.
Well, we certainly will make everyone aware when the meeting is. We are working very diligently on that. I want to publicly thank Commissioner Diane Webb for her assistance, and both she and I have had discussions with the county exec. We are working on a date, because the new county executive is, has made it very clear to us that there's some very financial struggles that the county has to do, and that's of utmost priority to him. But we, both the commissioner and I, both had discussions. The council chair and I have had discussions about putting together a particular date. We have a tentative date. We'd be more than happy to announce it, and everybody will get a couple weeks knowledge, but you've gotta have to allow us to. So numerous people that are participating in that particular event, and you gotta wait until we get those confirmations. And that is, we're in the process of doing that right now. So, we're working very diligently and hard on the matter, and it'll happen when it happens.
Any other council members?
Mr. Chairman.
I think Councilwoman Horvath, and then.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Um, I wanted to do this first meeting of the year, and I neglected. Um, but I want to talk about Goodfellows for a minute. We had a very successful Goodfellow canned goods drive this year. Um, but the most outstanding, um, donations came from Kinlock School. They donated 2,400 canned goods. Uh, they had a contest, and the room that brought in the most canned goods got to do something with the fire department. I'm not sure quite what it was. Um, and one of the classes brought in 637 cans. Now, if you've ever been at the Goodfellow Berwin Center when we're doing these canned goods, 2,400 cans is probably equal to all the other schools that we received. It was amazing. And I just want to give them a great, great, big shout-out. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. They also, along with supporting the Goodfellows, they supported the homeless vets by having a similar contest in October, where they again collected several hundred cans of canned goods. So, um, Kinlock, you're doing a great job. The last thing I wanted to say is, I had an opportunity today to talk to Dana in the Water Department, and whoever her boss is, she is a perfect person to deal with the public. I mean, she was just, and I just say this as Marge, because a lot of them, believe it or not, don't know who I am, and she was just outstanding. She's an excellent, excellent employee for the city of Dearborn Heights. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Coniston?
Yeah, to just echo what Councilwoman Horvath said, thank you for Kinlock and everybody who helped out with the Goodfellows this year. We helped out, was it 124 families, Marge?
Yeah.
And several hundred children. And we'll be doing it again, of course, next year. And a proposal be coming to the, this body from the Watershed Stewards to, we have Honor Society students that we're gonna have as honorary members, and have a position for that on a sort of a rotating basis, so they, they always participate, they always help out, they always do a great job. So that'll be, I think, next meeting, and watch for that. Thank you.
Any other council members? Mayor, do you have anything? Okay. Then, at this particular time, if anyone has any announcements, and I want to start off by saying that Gary from the arena, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Clerk.
Yeah, we have. We have an election for those people who reside in the District Seven School District. That election is Tuesday, February 24. If you have applied for an absentee ballot, we have sent those out, um, week, week and a half ago. So if you have applied, and you have not received your ballot, please contact us, let us know. We will make arrangements to find out what happened to your ballot, and replace that lost ballot if you didn't get it. Our number 791-3432. Also, we are looking for people with computer skills who want to work future elections. We really could use your help. You do not necessarily have to be a resident of Dearborn Heights. You have to be a Wayne County resident and a registered voter. If you know of anybody who would be interested, please, once again, send them our way, please. Our number 791-3432. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Then, at this time, uh, Gary from the arena asked me if he can give a little update on what's happening there. He'll need a little additional time, and I just grant that it's okay with the rest of the council?
Yes.
Okay, then Gary, just come to the microphone, and let us know what's happening.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time.
Sure.
Proud to announce that we're ready to open the doors. Uh, we spent the last three months converting the inside, as we said we would do. Um, we have, God, not only cleaned and sanitized the entire building from top to bottom, we had a lot of repair work to do on the outside of the building. Uh, we have probably put in about $90,000 worth of material and labor. Um, we have done our soft opening, took care of those issues. We're working through a couple of issues with the, with the Parks and Rec Department, but, uh, we're ready to go. So we're planning our grand opening on February 21, like 11:00 in the morning. It's a Saturday. If the council would love to come and, and be part of that, we'd love to do it. Doors are open. You're welcome, if you're in the area, to walk around. Come on in and take a look. Uh, we're building programs. Um, we've gone ahead, like I said, and replaced a lot of stuff. We put a new scoreboard up in the arena, um, which is a digital one, which counts down the seconds, and the 10 seconds, and that. We've already have hosted our soft opening, the Festival for the American Inline Hockey League, which is a US program, and the Great Lakes Division has already been there and played 24 games in a day and a half. Uh, we were there from Saturday at 11:00 in the morning. We got done around 1:00 in the morning, came back at 8:00 Sunday, and we finished up around 2:00. So they're coming back. We've, we were able to secure all four of the regional festivals, plus the Great Lakes Playoffs for inline hockey. Now, these are pro and minor pro players. These aren't kids. These are adults, anywhere from 17 to 30, that are still playing the game. Um, we've started our drop-ins, and we're getting 30, 30 players a night now coming in for a drop-in. Dearborn Heights residents, Dearborn residents, we've got them coming in, as far as Sterling Heights coming over to play. Um, we have started our adult league already. Last Sunday, we started. We've got eight teams, that's about 100 players, already coming every Sunday at 5:00 to play in a league that's supervised by the Great Lakes Inline Hockey League. We've already secured the collegiate Midwest, uh, the Midwest Collegiate Inline Hockey League, which is the inline league that governs all the colleges in five states. They're coming on March 7th and the 8th to play their championship round. We've secured them already. Uh, in April, Crestwood High School rented the building for 15 days to do their student testing. Uh, I guess they've been renting smaller venues, having to do a lot of moving around. They came over, and they said, God, this is perfect. Uh, and so we've rented them our building for 15 days, so they could get all the students under one roof and one location near the high school to do their SATs, ACTs, their meat testing and that. And the best part about it is their two-way radios work from the rig to the office. So they were thrilled about that.
You cut them a good deal, didn't you?
Yeah, yeah.
You cut them a good deal.
Well, we did. We kinda said, you know what, we'll do what the city did, and we matched everything the city matched up, to put them in that building.
Thank you.
EMU, Eastern Michigan, University of Michigan's inline teams have now moved to Canfield Arena, and became their home arena. So they'll be playing out of there in the 2015 season, which would be the fall, starting to play some games now. Uh, we went ahead, and we gave Alkali. Alkali is an international sports supplier of inline equipment, jerseys. We gave them title sponsorship for in-kind donation. So when we start our Tots and Dolls program, they will be donating 20 sets of equipment for the little ones, so parents don't have to pay for it. We'll have it there for them to supply. We've got 900 pairs of inline skates that are used for rental, so we already have that for those that don't have skates, roller skates, or inline skates. We will be able to rent those out for them. The other thing that we were able to secure, without getting into history, the Wheelchair Hockey League. Wheelchair Hockey League is a league that we started many years ago, well, 15 years ago. 15 years ago, and it's for kids that are confined to wheelchairs. They have power chairs, manual chairs, and we taught them how to play the game on the, on the ice or on gym floors. We were able to adapt their chairs with the sticks and the ball, and they are now moving to Canfield in September to become the home of the Wheelchair Hockey League. That group also has a national and international base out of Canada and Great Britain, and every couple of years, they do an international tournament, and we've already put in to host that in 2017. So we've got now secured that disability and that, that media for those kids to play. We created our own community-based programs, the Learn to Skate, Learn to Play, Tikes and Dolls for the little kids. We've already secured AAU to come in and give us their Junior Olympics Regional Playoffs. We're now dealing with the state AAU directors on bringing in their statewide championships for volleyball, wrestling, karate, and basketball. So fortunately, as you can see, we've done a real cross, cross-section of different disciplines in the sports. We've been able to secure the high school, which is using it for testing, which opens us up to other venues. With the work we've done, we've been able to get the temperature in their buildings between 60 and 65, which is terrific because it's comfortable, the kid, you know, all that. Took a lot of work. We sealed up a lot of open daylight that we could see through the walls, spent a lot of time, a lot of caulk, a lot of insulation, and we were able to take care of that. We've seemed to, with the Parks and Rec's help, got rid of our, our squatters, the little ones up in the air that we just couldn't figure out where they're coming. Well, we found out there was a mother with a den of babies. We finally got them out because we made so much noise that they left. We finally got them out. The raccoons, I mean, the skunk situation was taken care of through your pest control. We've replaced the ceiling tiles in the lobby. So we're really thrilled. We're happy to do it. We certainly want to make sure the residents know we're there. The nice part about it is we kept the name. It's still the Canfield Arena, but it's Canfield Alkali. We wanted to keep the history. We kept all the historical stuff is there. The banners are still hanging in the arena. The showcase from the Dad's Seven Club is still filled with all their stuff, and we wanted to keep that history. It's interesting now that adults are walking in with their kids and said, "I played here when it was an outdoor rink. I played here when they put the roof on it." So now they're bringing their kids back because they're hearing that it's changed and they wanted to see it. So we're getting a lot of interest there. We've hung some jerseys on the wall. One parent was there the other day watching his son play in the pro league, and he says, "I played on that Gold Digger team with that jersey hanging on the wall." So we're bringing the people back. We've worked out a relationship with the Parks and Rec that we're going to share some advertising and get the, you know, get it out to the residents so they know what events we have, and we're excited to go. So February 21st, 11 o'clock, we'd love to have you all come and part, you know, and participate in the grand opening. A lot of stuff will be free, no charge, you know, for the day, you know. And any questions for anybody?
Anyone have any questions?
Just kudos.
Yes, ma'am.
For the fine job that you're doing.
Nice job.
We made a good decision.
We know you did.
That's a lot.
We did.
We know you did.
You've been hustling.
Yeah, yeah. Kids get a kick out of watching the floor Zamboni drive around cleaning the floor, you know. It's a sports court. It's 200 by 85, which is uncommon for, you know, for any kind of an inline sports, where it gives them the full hockey feeling, and it's, it's, it's good. It's really good.
Good.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, you're going to be open all year round.
Yeah, we'll be a 12-month arena.
Now, is there anything, any sport in there that's like open to the public? Like, could I come in there? Well, not me, but my great-grandchild.
Give you one of those things to push around.
Come in like at 10 o'clock on Saturday. Is there, is there other offerings?
Yes, we're going to be offering drop-ins, hockey, open skate time. We're going to offer Friday evenings for the kids, you know, we'll have skating, open skating times where they can come. You know, we plan on doing that either a Friday night and a Saturday afternoon or a Sunday. You know, we want to work out the logistics. We want to make sure we have enough of our own people there for security purposes. We also, what we did is we installed our own security cameras. We have 16 cameras in that building now, and I can watch it from my phone. You can watch it from my, the office. So we have that to help out in case there's any issues. And the building is, you know, we're all ready to go, insured and the whole thing. And thanks to the Parks and Rec and Ken for his, his help in getting things moved along so that we could get to this point and have something good, you know. The Chiefs have been there for a lot of years in that rink, and it's, it's home for us, too. The Motor City Chiefs is a 501. We took over the building, put in this program in there, and we're very happy with it.
Good.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
How many other venues?
Do they do any?
I don't know.
Maybe one in the country, two possibly.
In the country?
Not as new, not as, not, not, they're, some of them have the same kind of area, but they haven't done cosmetically what we've done with the surface that we had to work with.
Oh.
Not even close. Not even close.
Yeah, it's very good.
You said everything. Where's it at?
Canfield Arena. It's on 2100 Kinlock. It's where the ice arena was.
It's where the ice arena is.
No, I, we pulled the, well, the ice and everything's there. We didn't touch the equipment. We just laid a sports court down over the concrete to protect that.
So if I wanted to sign up for a league or to drop in, is there a schedule on the Internet anywhere or?
We are producing that now on our website. We do have some information out there. There's brochures and stuff in the arena, and we're working with Ken to get it out in the next distribution.
What's the website or is it not up yet, the web address?
It's www.canfieldalkaliarena.com, and a lot of the stuff is posted on there. We were going to get our schedules up and go to the, to Comcast, ask them to pull it up on the bulletin board so that it would flash on the board and roll through, and some other things that Ken has suggested we would do to advertise that the arena's there, you know.
Great, great. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Very good. Okay. Mike, I see you're next there.
No tape change yet?
No.
No tape change yet?
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Just had a couple of announcements. First off, Tuesday, February 10th at 7:00 at Carolyn County Library, Gem Theatrics will be doing a presentation on John and Abigail Adams called "My Dearest Friend" by Michigan playwright Mary G. Krone. This play chronicles the true story of the lives of John and Abigail Adams using original sources. This play is a touching flashback of the high points of their lives together. Next Tuesday, February 7th, or next on Tuesday, February 17th at 7:00 PM, we will be doing a brief history of military communication given by radio lecturer Jerry Begel. In this presentation, he will be covering over 3,000 years of history we may have missed, including ways militaries communicated, encrypted messages, identifying friend or foe, and the Red Menace and its technological aftermath. Also, don't forget that next Thursday at 7:00 PM at Carolyn County Library, we, at 7:00 PM, we'll be doing a presentation on recognizing local scams, so come on out and get informed. I'm also proud to announce that over the past few months, our programs have had some impact. Since October 11th of last year, we have had a gate count of, in excess of 83,000 between both libraries to date. So thanks, Dearborn Heights, for your support. That's all for now. Thank you for your time and see you at the library.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else have any announcements, things going on, happening in the city? Seeing none. Then at this point, if anyone has any questions or concerns, please direct them to me. If you would like to talk to another council member, the mayor, department head, et cetera, let me know, and I will ask if he or she would like to respond. Councilman Barry will keep time. You'll have three minutes. After, you give your name, street, and the city you reside in. When you have 15 seconds left, you will hold that sign up, and when you have, time is up, he will hold that sign up, and I will tap the gavel if you don't happen to see that. So at this point, does anyone have anything they want to bring before the council?
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
Ali Turfi here, owner and occupant at 25625 Elon Drive. I've owned the property since 2012. Since I've owned the property, I've had it listed with the city as a non, non-principal residence, and I paid non-principal residence taxes for two years on the property. This past August in 2014, my tenants had moved out. I decided to occupy the property. When I moved into the property, I changed the roof, did some remodeling, put some new siding on the, alongside the house, changed the gutters, new windows, made it look nice for me to live in it. After I did the remodeling, I went to the city to actually file the property as a personal residence. Since now I'm living at the house, I'm occupying the house. So when I went to the assessor's office, for me to actually make it a personal residence, they required four things from me. Number one, to get a new certificate of occupancy in my name. They required for me to provide utility bills in my name to prove that I'm actually living at the house. They also wanted to see my driver's license and my voter's registration card that I'm actually living at the house. I provided all the documents to the assessor's office on September 9th, and that's when my certificate of occupancy was actually approved by the building department on September 9th, the same day I filled the affidavit form for the homestead. I'll pass these over if you guys want to take a look at them. My certificate of occupancy, which is in my name, Ali Turfi at 25625 Elon, the same day I filed.
We believe you. We believe you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So after I did all that, I received my tax bill, and my tax bill showed that I'm actually exempt from the school taxes, and it showed that everything went through. I got granted my homestead. So I went ahead and paid my tax bill. After I paid my tax bill, two days, two weeks after, I received, I received a revised bill in the mail, revised bill, which is right here, stating that I owe additional $523. With that bill, I also received a denial letter from the city that they denied my homestead, not giving me any explanation on why they denied it. It was just denied, which here's the denial letter from the assessor herself. So I went to the assessor and I explained to her the situation. I provided all the documents that I needed to provide. I have no other homestead in the country. That's where I live. That's where I sleep. I remodeled the house, put some serious money into the house to make it my personal residence. And basically, I asked the assessor herself, Wendy, on why my personal residence was denied, and she told me basically, I have it recorded that by her driving by the property, she feels that I don't occupy it, and I have that recorded on my phone. So I said, "That's fine." I wasn't going to argue with her back and forth, but I provided all the documents that was needed. Then I went to the mayor's office to actually speak to the mayor about this issue. And I guess to speak to the mayor in the city of Dearborn Heights, you have to explain your story to the secretary, and if it's worthy enough, they will schedule an appointment with the mayor. So I went to the secretary and I explained my story to her, and she told me basically that sounds like a state issue, and there's nothing we can do for you here. So I said, "Well, I live in the city. Don't I have every right to speak to my mayor? From my understanding, the mayor works for the people, and I have every reason to talk to my mayor and figure out what's going on." So she basically denied me an appointment with the mayor. I came back the following morning. I waited outside the mayor's office from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, two hours outside the mayor's office for the mayor to actually walk into the office. Then I seen the mayor walking in, and I briefly explained to him on what's going on, and he told me, "We'll make an appointment. You come see me on Thursday," which is two days after I was there. And I was at work. I was busy that day. We had an appointment after 3:30. I called the mayor's office at 3:20, 10 minutes before my appointment with the mayor. And his sec, personal secretary, Christina, I think her name was, she answered the phone. I told her, "I'm on my way to speak to the mayor." That's the same girl that denied me an appointment to meet with the mayor. She told me that the mayor had already left, and you missed your appointment. And she hung up in my face.
Okay.
I then, I then.
Let him talk.
Called the mayor's office.
Let him talk.
After. I kept on calling every day at 11:00 in the morning because I know that's when the mayor shows up. And they just got to a point where I guess they realized my phone number. They knew my phone number, and every time they see it, they quit answering my calls. I leave voicemails. Nobody returned my calls. Then the mayor had Chief Gavin personally call me and tell me that I have to stop calling the mayor's office because the mayor could not do anything for me. He, the mayor, sitting right there, had the chief call me, a resident, telling me that I have to stop calling the city because the mayor doesn't want to talk to me about my issue. Then who am I supposed to go to about this issue? I followed every step that I was supposed to follow to actually prove homestead that I'm living at that property. I got a certificate of occupancy in September of 2014. I got all my utility bills. I got my voter's registration card. I got my driver's license. I have no other homestead in the country. This is the only house that I own that I live in.
Ali, I, question. There's probably no one from the assessor here.
No.
But isn't there a date, and isn't it like March or something?
November 1st.
That, at that date, whatever that property is, so you may have to wait until.
November 1st, exactly.
March.
No, the, the assessment date is November 1st, so you got to file all your paperwork prior to November 1st for you to actually get that homestead.
For the following year.
For the following year. And I did everything in September, which is two months prior, and I have all the documents on hand right here.
If I might, because I met with you prior to that, and you indicated to me that you were concerned about 2015. So I met with the assessor. You showed me all the information, and I then got back to you and told you that you would be granted a homestead for 2015. I also explained to you that in the Crestwood District, because of the fact that Crestwood was challenged with residency, there's a extra array of steps that need to be taken in the Crestwood School District, and that's what I was told by the assessor's office. The assessor's office, and I also, when I met with you that very first time, is I went out to this address and I looked at the home. The home was not fit for anybody to live in. The exterior back wall wasn't, was partially gone. There were four contractors working on the home, and I indicated to you that both, more than one department, building, assessment, did not believe that home was fit to live in and therefore was not entitled to a homestead exemption. That you were told by the assessor's office, and all the employees are very upset because you're always taping everything. People want to have a conversation with you, have a dialect, and you're right away secretly taping everybody. So a lot of the employees are just like, they're spooked by having somebody so confrontational, and you are very confrontational. Even though you're relaxed today, there's a different side to you. The fact of the matter is, and that's why I did not agree to meet with you after that, because I told you that I said, "You're going to be granted for 2015." That's what you asked me, and I followed up on that, and I got it approved. Then, then you came back, so we met a second time, and you said, "2014 is what I want."
That's not true.
Not 2014.
That's not true.
Yes. And so I actually called Mona Aiman into the office because Mona was there when we first met, and Mona said, "The mayor and I both heard you say, 'Ali, 2015,' and the mayor worked on your project for 2015, and I got that for you." So consequently, yes, you wanted to keep meeting. I mean, we could meet 50 times, but the fact of the matter is, the answer to this is the city of Dearborn Heights Assessment Office has denied it. The seven council members and the mayor do not have the power and the authority to grant a homestead. They can't sign that affidavit, and I can't. It's got to come from the assessor's office.
And I understand that.
Okay. So you were then told numerous times that you needed to file an appeal with the state of Michigan. You keep coming back to us, and I, I don't know how many times to explain it, but here is the thing. You caught me on the way in, and you expressed to me, "They won't let me meet with you." And I said, "Ali, do you have additional information?" I mean, we could meet till, for the next six months, but you've got to provide, is there some information that you can provide that, that will give me information, and I'll take it to the assessor? You said you did, and then I suggested we meet the very, I looked at my schedule, and I said, "I'm open from, let's say, 2:00, 3:00." I don't remember the time on Wednesday. And you said, "Well, can't meet Wednesday. How about Thursday at 3:30?"
Exactly.
I said, "That's fine." It was Mark. What you, the thing I find very troubling is, and that's the other reason why I told him, I said, "I don't want to meet with him." Here's the fact of the matter. At At 2:00, I had a meeting with representatives of the police department, and I had, I had a discussion with the chief and a few other individuals, and we met outside my office in the vestibule where the secretaries are. I was there from 2:00 to 4:30 in the afternoon in that particular area, and what was expressed to me was that you came in and you were told the mayor left because you didn't make the appointment. I was there.
I called. I just stated that I called. I called.
And so consequently...
I called the mayor, and your secretary said that you had left.
My feeling is, like, how many times am I going to go over the same thing with the same person and express the same thing? I don't know how many times to tell you that what you need to do is file an appeal with the state of Michigan. The assessing office and some of the other departments do not, and I personally looked at that house. There was no furniture in the house. There was nothing but contractors. There were four different contractors at the house, one working on the roof, one working in the interior, one was doing some gutter and other exterior work. That home, I'm not sure was together that you'd be living, I mean, technically, I think a raccoon or something else could have came in the house. It wasn't secured, and that's the problem that the assessing office has. They don't feel the home was livable for that particular date. But for 2015, you're all set, and that's why you asked me.
I understand that. We didn't ask about 2015.
I'll give you 15 seconds to wrap it up.
We didn't ask about 2015. It's about 2014, and I went ahead and I paid my tax bill, which it was exempt. I paid my tax bill, so clearly it was approved by the state. When I received my tax bill, it's paid, so it's exempt. And then I received a revised bill. Now who sent the revised bill? Clearly, the state approved it originally, which I paid my tax bill in full. Then two weeks after I pay my tax bill in full, which everything is approved by the state, because clearly you guys take all the documents that I provide to the state, then you guys send me a revised bill.
This will be something you need to kind of work out. Maybe you need to make an appointment with the assessor again.
So, you guys keep sending me around.
Assessor's office has no interest in...
Assessor won't talk to me, the mayor won't talk to me, the council won't talk to me.
Ali needs to go to the state of Michigan and file an appeal to the tax...
Mr. Chairman. Is this, is this for 2014 or 15?
Well, first I thought it was 2015, and...
That's where you made your mistake, Mayor. It's 14, and I clearly told you 14, because that's why I'm here, because it's 2014.
But it's a 2014 issue he's bringing up.
So you want me to go through the whole process again, get a new certificate of occupancy? Should I go through all that again to approve my homestead again? What am I supposed to do? How, that's another point. How did you guys issue me a certificate if I don't live there?
Okay, go ahead, Mohammed, yeah.
Yes, he did get a CVO. When we did the inspection, it was livable, but eventually, right after the CVO was issued, and I'm going to say it blunt, and I think, Mr. Chairman, you know about it, Councilwoman Horvath, you know about it, that's the house that started working in the back with no permits. And that's when the assessor went out there, and they saw that it was already open, nobody moved in, I think that's when they stopped it. The CVO was issued for him to move in, but before moving in, he started all that work with no permits. Thank you.
I did pull all the proper permits.
After.
I did pull all the proper permits to do the work on the house. That's not true. I do got all proper permits, and everything was approved by the city.
Okay, one sec. Councilman, councilman has a question.
Mr. Turfi, once the local assessor makes their determination...
Yeah.
Then your only remedy is to appeal to the tax tribunal. You have certain times to do that, and so if you keep going back to the assessor and saying, "Well, I think you're right," it's, especially for prior years, and there are strict time deadlines, but your, your next step is to go to the Michigan Tax Tribunal, because once the assessor makes the determination, and that's based on what the computer shows, if you have any other principal residences, the actual inspection and so forth, but, and it's a hotly litigated issue, what's a principal residence? But if somebody's been out there, they've looked, and they've made a determination...
How did you make a determination but by not going in the house? I offered the mayor to personally walk in my house. I offered you, Mayor, "Come in my house, and I'll show you my bedroom."
Ali, we're not going to resolve this here now.
Right.
Clearly, I mean, that's, that's the city of Dearborn Heights. You guys bounce people around.
No, that's...
I can't get a straight answer from nobody.
You heard the same answer. I mean, Councilman Constance was in the house.
So, Mr. Mayor, my, so my, my, so I'm approved for 2015, my personal homestead, and I don't got to fill out no more paperwork? So how, so why is it that they sent me a new application for, for 2014 with, with my paperwork?
I said 2015, not 14.
They resent me another affidavit form that I had to fill out with my denial letter.
For which year?
What year?
For 2015, with a new year coming.
Maybe they just include that in any mailing, the affidavit of principal residence. But yeah, that's, that's your...
Everybody gets... Okay, okay. Then, Ali, you've had more than your time, so thank you very much, and you've heard the next steps. Anyone else wants to bring something before the council?
Good evening, council. Troy Brown, Hanover Street, Dearborn Heights, 169. Mr. Chairman, do you know what 169 is? It's not my water bill this month, trust me.
Days since you filed, right?
No. Days since Dearborn Heights flooded my home.
Okay.
Dearborn Heights?
That's right. The city flooded my home on August 11th.
No.
Yes.
Just let them...
Yes, they did.
Dearborn Heights...
Dearborn Heights is paid to put water to my home and take it away. It did not happen on August 11th. My home was flooded. I was required, you can start your time now, I was required to, to file within 45 days. I did so by September 22nd. I have no answer from this body. I have no answer but excuses, and so when is the city going to compensate me for my losses on August 11th, 2014?
That I don't know. That's up to attorney.
Okay.
He handles that.
That's up to the attorney. How long does the attorney need?
Well, you're not the only one.
Yeah, I know. There's 1,400 of them.
Exactly.
So maybe, maybe if I can get 1,400, maybe 1,000 of my neighbors that filed, okay, to say, "We'll just put our, our taxes in a trust, and when this body gets its act together and gives, and compensates us for our losses, then we'll take it out of the trust and give it to the city." How about that? How does that sound? That's how you're treating us. That's how you're treating me personally, and it's wrong, Mr. Chairman, it's wrong.
I don't believe so, but that's your opinion, and that's our opinion.
My, my, look.
My opinion.
It's wrong to flood my home. I don't, I don't have a, I have half of a house. Do you go home to half of a house?
I think you're being very unfair.
How am I being unfair, Chairman, Mr. Chairman?
We have control over the amount of rain, water, the situation's on the East Coast now, all that.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, you do not, you do not, but you do have control over insurance, and you do have a responsibility to the residents of this city to protect us and protect our financial investment into the city, and you did not do that, and you keep giving me excuses.
In the attorney's hand, where he brings these...
The attorney, I, I looked at the back, I looked at 85 pages for backup today. There's attorney fees in there, from, from union issues to issues, the city from being sued for actions of employees. They're, the lawyers are working.
May I?
Yes, they are. You have comment?
Yes, I do, Mr. Troy.
Different attorneys for different situations.
You know, I understand your frustration, and I'm sure the other 1,499 people have the same frustrations as well as I do. Unfortunately, there's a process that needs to take place, and we can't just circumvent the system. If we circumvent the system, then what we do as a body is wrong to the other 26,000 or 54,000 residents that are out there. So we need to follow this process. I am waiting for some justification on it as well. I am just as frustrated as you, and you attend these meetings as well as I do. I don't think the city of Dearborn Heights intentionally flooded my house. There was a flood that took place. It left me homeless. I am just as frustrated as you, but for you to come in here and point to this body and say that this city flooded your house, number one, you're wrong. Number two, for you...